All right, I'd like to call to order the Radcliffe City Council Work Session for Monday, January 8th, 2024 at 5:00 PM, being held live, or being held here at City Hall and being streamed live on Facebook. If you will please rise for an implication and remain standing for our pledge.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for your abundant blessings. We thank you for the holiday season that we just went through. Father, we're thankful for our mayor and our city council members here, and we ask them that you give them guidance and direction as we go through this new year in making decisions for our city. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All right. Well, Ms. Owens, it looks like you're going to be all alone on your side of the aisle tonight, so I hope you keep that side calm and less rowdy as usual. So, Mr. Thompson couldn't make it, and I think Ms. Merle's on her way back from a trip, so we wish them safe travels. First, our agenda, well, welcome everybody back after the new year, let me say that. Happy New Year to everyone. Hope everyone had a good 2024 start. Murray, I heard you had a great meeting, so you can come up here and fill us in on what you had going on first week of New Years.
Well, it was a great meeting. I would say it was eventful because we had a pretty big agenda, as you can see. So, I do want to give you an overview of the Planning Commission meeting that we had, and the first item that I was going to give you an overview on was the annexation of the property located at the northeast corner of Ernest Arkuma Boulevard and Patriot Parkway, Kentucky 361, Elizabethtown, Kentucky, PVA map number 163-00-00-012.07, which was 12.522 acres. B&amp;M Development LLC is requesting the annexation of the property at the northeast corner of that intersection, and the total area of the proposed, of the proposed annexation is just over 12 acres. It is Mel's Acres Subdivision Lot 2D, and there's an exhibit attached with your packet that shows where that property location is, and we've also included the annexation ordinance associated with the property.
Murray, that's the one across, just right across from where the new events, venues built, just to kind of correlate that.
Yeah, I think it's the Phillips Grove Wedding Center or Wedding Chapel. So, it's just across, yeah, on the north side of that road. Didn't know if you had any questions about that one?
And they just wanted to annex that portion into the city.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, if there's no questions, move on to the next item, and that's a zoning ordinance, rezoning the property located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Ernest Arkuma Boulevard and Patriot Parkway, Kentucky 361, Elizabethtown, Kentucky, Mel's Acres Subdivision, Lot 2D, PVA map 163-00-012.07, from a R1 zone, Hardin County, to a commercial zone. And that map amendment, give you some information on that. So, that map amendment is proposed by B&amp;M Development LLC, and they're going from a Hardin County R1 zone to a City of Radcliffe Commercial Zone, and the existing land use of the properties are farms. Surrounding properties are single-family detached residential farms and vacant land, and the Planning Commission did recommend approval of the zone map amendment from a Hardin County R1 to a commercial zone. So, anytime a property is brought into the city, it does have to have a zone associated with it, a rezoning, and that's essentially what the developer is proposing, to go to a commercial zone. If you look at the map attached, the zone map attached with the packet, as you can see, to the south of the property, everything's already City of Radcliffe Commercial, which is the red.
Okay.
And that does include the Phillips Grove Wedding Center over there. So, they're basically just wanting to rezone it along that limited access highway, Patriot Parkway to commercial. Any questions on that one?
No. All right, Murray, move on to C.
All right, we'll move on to C, which is a zoning ordinance, rezoning the property located at 1276 Hill Street, Radcliffe, Kentucky, being a portion of PVA map number 138-40-01-088. That's from a residential 4 zone to a residential 6 zone. Okay, so the applicant for this rezoning is Eddie Cato, and the size of the property is 1.22 acres of a five-acre property at 1276 Hill Street, and the surrounding properties are single-family residential, multifamily, and vacant land, as shown on the attached zoning map amendment plot, and the Radcliffe Planning Commission did recommend approval of the zone map amendment from a R4 zone to a R6 zone. Just for a little bit of information, the R4 zone is a high-density, single-family and duplex zone, and the R6 zone is a multifamily zone, so that would be for apartments. And if you look at the zone map, the property to the south, and also the property to the east is zoned R6. There's some existing apartments on the property to the east. So, they're essentially trying to match the zoning to the adjoining property. Because that property has split zoning right now. Any questions on that one? There's no questions. Move on to the next one, which is a zoning ordinance, rezoning property at 1278 Hill Street, Radcliffe, Kentucky, being a portion of PVA map number 138-40-01-030, from residential holding RH to R6, residential 6. And Eddie Cato, again, is the applicant on this one, and he's requesting a zone map amendment for 1.34 acres of a 12.9 acre property at 1278 Hill Street. The surrounding properties are single-family residential, multifamily, and vacant land, and the Radcliffe Planning Commission did recommend approval of the zone map amendment from residential holding to R6. If you look at the exhibit, it's kind of a sliver of property there, south of 1278, on the zone map amendment plot, being 1.34 acres, and this is another property that has split zoning on it. It has some R6, some R4, and RH. And essentially, they're trying to rezone, or I'm sorry, it has R4 and RH, and they're trying to rezone that sliver from RH to R6. And that would match the R6 to the east. And essentially, the RH zone is a residential holding zone intended for future residential use, and it's generally a five-acre tracks minimum. The intent is to, for it to be rezoned to be used for another residential zone classification at a future date. So, that's essentially what the applicant's proposing to do.
Is there a road easement through there, behind the house?
They do have a right-of-way that goes up to, I think it's the property, the next one that we're going to talk about, it actually, or it pretty much joins that property next to this one, so that'll be the next one. It's the end of Hillcrest Drive, it's the right-of-way for that.
On the backside?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any questions on that one? Okay, if there's no questions, we'll move on to the next one, and the next one is a zoning ordinance, rezoning property located at 1278 Hill Street, Radcliffe, Kentucky, and it's for a portion of PVA map number 138-40-01-030, and that's from a residential holding zone, RH, to a residential 4, R4 zone. The applicant, again, is Eddie Cato, and he's requesting zone map amendment of 10.03 acres of a 12-acre parcel at 1278 Hill Street. Surrounding prop, it does contain a single-family home on the property. Surrounding properties are single-family residential, mobile homes, and vacant land, as you can see on the attached zone map amendment plot, and the Radcliffe Planning Commission did recommend approval of the zone map amendment from residential holding to R4. And what he's trying to do, if you look at your zone map there, is the property along the road that is, that's part of that 12-acre property, it's zoned R4, so he's trying to match this portion to the portion along the road being R4.
Any questions? Of course, y'all have time over the week to look over all this again, obviously. Murray, you want to hit F?
So, that's all of those, then we actually have one more still to go. And if there's no questions, we'll go to that one. It's a zoning ordinance, rezoning property at 3941 South Wilson Road, Elizabethtown, Kentucky, and that's a portion of PVA 182-10-00-010. That's from a residential 3, R3 zone, to a residential 4, R4 zone. Okay, that zone map amendment request was submitted by Hardin County developers, and they're requesting rezoning of 41.1 acres of 284.7 acres, and the property has essentially an old farmhouse on it. It's classified as a farm by Hardin County PVA. Surrounding properties are single-family residential and vacant land, as shown on the, as you can reference on the rezon plot, and the Radcliffe Planning Commission did recommend approval of a zone map amendment from a R3 zone to a R4 zone. So, to give you all a bit of an idea, that is a portion of Cali Crossing subdivision, which is zoned as R3, and the R3 zone is a medium-density, single-family duplex zone. The R4 zone is a high-density single-family duplex zone. There's a small difference in the lot sizes. You're looking at the average lot size being 8,000 square feet in the R3 zone, 6,500 square feet in the R4 zone. The lot widths, you're looking at about 75 feet in the R3 zone, 70 foot in the R4 zone. Doesn't seem like a lot, but over 41 acres. It should allow the builder some flexibility to get some more building lots, to offset inflation costs, costs of construction, and also, you know, rising interest rates. So, visibly, people are not going to notice from just looking at the size of the lots, but it should allow the builder to offset some of those costs. That was the primary reason he was looking to rezone the property.
And if I may add, the other sections of Cali Crossing are all zoned R3 currently, right Murray?
Correct.
So, Cali Crossing all throughout is R3. The applicant here is Hardin County developers. That's one of Larry Phillips' companies. Larry Phillips also had the first property with B&amp;M. So, Mr. Phillips testified during the public hearing that his intent was to continue to build single-family homes, just like the rest of Cali Crossing, only the lot sizes are going to be a little bit smaller.
And it's separate than from the other?
It's a, it'll be a separate section.
Yeah.
So, that's, that's the rest of the story.
Do we have any public hearing comments, I know, on that section?
There were comments.
Comments and questions. There were some concerns about traffic, and there were some folks in Cali Crossing that don't want the rest of Cali Crossing to be developed because, you know, they like green grass. But the history of that subdivision, as you guys well know, is that the original farms are hundreds and hundreds of acres, and the intent was to develop all of it, as much as could be, and the city was happy to annex it in and wanted it all developed for housing. So, it was a pretty easy case for the Planning Commission on that.
Most people just wanted to know what's R3, what's R4, and same use groups in terms of permitted uses, just slightly different density, lot width. So, I think that was the primary basis of the conversation, you know, what is this zone that they're proposing?
And you guys can look at the transcript as well, and if you have questions, you can let us know also. But the, I think the Planning Commission did a very solid job handling all five of these requests. They made sense, and they, they matched with the comp plan pretty easily.
Any questions? Will Murray try us to leave? Of course, y'all, like I said, just, you know, obviously, it's your all's first time getting the packet, so any questions or anything you need to review, just you feel free to reach out to Murray. But of course, just keep in mind, everything that you, you absorb and take in is what we take out of the Planning Commission meeting. So, just keep your packet, because we'll use those for next week's meeting, so.
I would also remind you that the law says that you're not to do any independent investigation, so please don't go out and interview the neighbors in Cali Crossing or try to talk to the applicant or anything like that. It's really not appropriate, unless you guys are going to have your own public hearing, which, you know, you usually don't do that, so, just a reminder.
Yeah.
But we are going, we've already seen several zone map amendment applications. Here's another batch. I don't know how many are in the chute now, but...
Well, as of this exact moment, we don't have any in the chute.
But springtime's coming. It won't be long.
Tomorrow, I may have a different answer.
And if interest rates, I mean, who knows what they're doing, right? I mean, the buzz is they're not going to go up, but, you know, so, you know, are they in, are they static or are they going to, who knows, right? I'm not, I'm not sure. Mr. Powell knows, but he might, anyway. So, bottom line is, everyone's telling us we need more housing, right? The employers are telling us we need more housing. Realtors and brokers are telling us we need more housing. We don't have enough inventory. Interest rates are higher than they have been for years, but not as high as they were 30 years ago when I bought my first house. So, anyway, but, but the Planning Commission, they, they did a good job with these hearings. And the public came, and it was a good hearing. It's orderly, good questions, and good conversations. So, it was a, it was a good meeting, as Murray said. Thank you, Murray.
All right, thank you.
All right. All right, next we have Chief Cross. He's somewhere back there. He has a proposal he wanted to discuss, and of course, when it has to do with dollars, you know, that's part of what the council does. Jeff and I have been discussing this issue and about how to make it work, and there are some dollar figures, but he just wants to propose, he's got a plan, he's just kind of wanting to discuss and see if the council has any interest in it, and I told him just come before the council and see what he can come up with.
Thank you, sir.
You do everything.
Oh, Chief, how are you?
Good, I got one for you too.
Happy New Year to you.
You too.
Can you hear me? Here?
Good.
You good. Okay. Currently, on our strength table, if you want to look at that, we'll go all the way down to the evidence custodians. If y'all remember, back in July, I asked to put a sworn officer in there, but that sworn officer was just a evidence custodian with police powers, and he, retired guy, and he gets a $40,000 pay. No benefits were paid in on that person. I think we had to pay social security on that, but it's roughly $40,000 and some change for that position. We struck the, the regular evidence custodian position, took it down to zero. We had one evidence supervisor at that time, Gina, she has since left us several months ago. So, we were, are at kind of a crossroads now. Do we want to go forward with continuing to try and have sworn personnel in the evidence room instead of having civilians in there? I think this has worked out very well with what we've done so far, and a lot of agencies do this. They, they have sworn police officers that are their evidence custodians. One, one reason you get that is, if you're, like we said back in July, if you're, if you're transporting weapons and evidence and things like this, you have those police powers for something, if it were to happen, if you're going to the lab, if you're going to the courts. In addition to that, what I would like to do is move the, strike the evidence custodian positions all together and make detective positions out of those. One thing that happens there is, for us, the benefit of adding a couple of police officers, full-time police officers, that are assigned to the detective section, but they are full-time. They'll, they'll work cases, they'll take call-outs. But in addition to their duties, they will take care of the evidence and the evidence room, and they'll, they'll help really big. We're coming out on crime scenes, we're processing crime scenes. It takes a lot of manpower sometimes. This year, we had, for the first time ever, we had five homicides, and, and those detectives worked long hours. It takes a lot to do within, in the first 72 hours of that are the most important. We had one where the suspect had to go to the hospital, and we had to sit on that person for a couple of days, and so we were having officers having to come in and call people in to cover the streets because they were having to help do that. So, if you, the more manpower we got in that detective section, the better it would be for them to investigate these crimes that are, that take up a lot of time. You know, it's not just the homicide. This could be a burglary, it could be a robbery. It would just be beneficial to us to, to, my, my thoughts are to make this move, and you go back up to the detective section there under that, where it says authorize or fund a strength table of three, that would take that to five instead of three. So, you'd, you'd take your evidence completely to zero and move two up, move them both up full-time to detectives, which would make that five. This would obviously relieve a lot of the burdensome of the caseloads that we have in there right now. Now, when we do that, if you look at 22, after funded for the officer's position, right now, that, that includes that one officer that's in the evidence room that's only, he's not using any police powers other than in the evidence room. He's not taking calls. He's not counted as a body out on the street. Now, he helps out sometimes, like if they need an escort or something like this, but if he was in that detective section, or she, if it were a she, they would help tremendously with our detectives and the caseloads that they have. Now, the bottom line to all this would be, if you'll turn to that next page there, Chance has ran some numbers on this, explained how much it would cost, and he's, he's, his plan, this plan would cost about $50,500 per year, in addition to what we're paying right now. But for that $50,500, you're getting two full-time detectives, and the evidence room is still being kept up the way it should be. Now, if we did that in mid-budget, like right where we are right now, the current budget, that cost is going to come down to about $21,000 because of the number of months we have Any questions?
When did Gina leave?
Gina left...
October, November?
Mid-October, end of, end of October, something like that.
And then you hired Paul when he...
Well, we hired Jason right before she left, because that gave us our officer custodian plus her, the supervisor custodian. And that would eliminate any need for the, either custodian, whether it be supervisor or custodian one or two, because they would be going, working in, under the detective section, and they would be managed and supervised by the detective supervisor.
Now, keep in mind that last paragraph of the council asked the impact, that number always, of course, goes lower, depending on how long it takes for Jeff to hire, if he did hire somebody, obviously, but that's just what's remaining in this current budget. Jeff, and Jeff and I spoke about what it would look like if we held this position over to the new budget. We discussed that. So, there's different options. We're just trying to figure out, and like I said, this is a decision as far as personnel, but dollars, you know, it's something the council has to consider.
Now, the, the dollars for, in the current budget, I have the money in there that's, that's from savings that we haven't, you know, we're not in full staff right now, so we wouldn't have, I wouldn't have to ask you all for additional monies during this budget cycle.
Yeah, we'd be able to fund it.
But when we come to, when we come up to the next budget cycle, you can look at that $50,000 figure in addition to what, what we would be asking for. But again, you get two full-time officers, and that takes our strength table to 41, and that's another thing. IACP is, for many years, they've recommended one officer per 500 citizens. Roughly, if we're 23,000, we, we would be at 41 at that point, and still have the need for years down the road to try and get to where we need to be, you know, to be under that recommended strength table that nationally, where they recommend you be.
Chief, would the duty descriptions be amended to include this additional, well, this responsibility?
Yes. Elizabethtown has theirs this way, you know, I would just take a, I don't want to reinvent the wheel. They already have it in theirs. Our, our strength table right now, or I'm sorry, our, our job descriptions right now, we're covered pretty good because it, it says all other duties as assigned, but I would like to specifically have a, some bullet points in there to clarify what their responsibilities are in the evidence room. No matter which officer that you have in your organization that had to do that, it would be there already, so that, you know, be clear-cut.
Thank you.
over here, over there since he's taken over, and, and things are, he's kind of helped us realize what we can do with this, and how it will help us if we go in this direction.
Yeah, and real quick, Jeff, if you don't care, we've had some good, obviously, evidence civilian custodians over the years.
Yes.
But can you explain to the council, just in case, just maybe a refresher, just what all, and testif, what all the evidence people do, how they testify when it comes to court cases?
Yes, the evidence custodians are responsible for the evidence that come in the room if the officers go out and, and make an arrest, or execute a search warrant, or what have you. All that evidence has to be processed and brought into, to the evidence room. Your chain of command is very important. That's one area where sometimes the officers out in the field may be processing evidence, they put it in the evidence locker, it passes through their hands, it passes to the evidence custodians' hands. One place that this would help, not that you could do it every time, they're not going to come out and take, you know, officers on a traffic stop, but if a search warrant is executed, these detectives can go to the scene and process that scene directly, they can collect the evidence themselves, and it doesn't have to be turned over, because they are the evidence custodians. So that would be a big benefit to that. When that evidence is, is taken in, there might be evidence that has to be processed at the lab, so they, they're responsible for taking it to the lab, both in Louisville and Frankfurt, to two, two different labs at times. And then if court testimony comes up, they are well-versed in court testimony, where an evidence custodian may only testify, you know, once in a while, if a case goes to trial, and they have to have that, that custodian in there. But these officers that are, that are, you know, well-versed in, in court testimony, and following through with their cases, and working them all the way through, that would be beneficial there, too. And like I said, when you're transporting drugs, guns, and money, and/or any of those through to court, or to the lab, it don't hurt to have armed police officers doing that job. Anything else?
Yes, sir.
Good. I know what Pam's thinking, how are we going to fund it? But, you know, it's like everything else, you have to find a place for it, it just depends on whether or not we, you know, deem it, we just have to budget for it when the budget comes up.
So we're, we're really only looking at hiring one additional person at this point?
So what it is, the way, the way it's set up right now, we would, we have one currently on contract, he would be hired as a contract officer, just like we do the retirees now, and then we would change the one evidence custodian to a contract officer, where the additional difference comes in at the $50,000, 500 per year.
And the one currently would be transferred, you'd strike 20, police officer, you'd strike that, make that 21, and then he's moved to the detective section, and then the, the, the new hire, so to speak, their new position that's created, will go to the detective section. So you would have, you'd just be hiring one additional.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, and just changing the pay of the second one to equal.
Right, right, okay.
And then one thing I would suggest, and I'm sure Chief Cross would be more than happy to accommodate, is if any of the council wants to go by and see our evidence room currently, and the amount of stuff that we store there, I think it'd be, you know, advantageous.
How long, how long do we hold that evidence?
It depends on the crime. Some of it, you can't never get rid of. Some of it you can get rid of, found property and things like that, you can get rid of in a short time.
The vehicles out back.
Some cases, you might misdemeanor, you got five years, but there are some cases where, and we're overwhelmed with those kinds of things, you've, you've got to keep it for...
Many, many, many years.
Yes.
But it's stored in the, and it's got to be categorized, and then when it gets moved, it all has to be...
And you have unsolved cases, too.
That's right.
Are we running out of space for any of that?
We, we are running out of space, but with this remodel, we're, we're expanding, we're doubling the size of our evidence room. So it's going to be very helpful when this remodel's done.
Yeah, we put a, when we do the locker, how many years ago was the locker?
Pass-through locker?
Yeah.
Fifteen, 12 years.
I mean, I remember we did, when we did that, it was like, oh, my goodness.
Yeah, that was a big deal.
That was big, we got all excited when that happened, so. But yeah, I would say that maybe over the next week or so, y'all just take a moment and schedule a meeting with Cross, and let him just take in, that way y'all can kind of see, and I'm not trying to advocate either way, but I'm just saying, it gives y'all perspective of what they do, and it's probably good for y'all to see some of that, if y'all have an opportunity.
Well, I commend us, because our evidence room looks a heck of a lot better than our state troopers do. I've been in both, it, it almost looks like quagmire when you go and look at organized chaos, but I think ours is a little bit better.
Well, I would say that, that, not that anybody has, has done a bad job, I'm not saying that, but...
Right, it's just organization, yeah, and space.
But when Jason came in and, and has taken that over, he's really, really made a huge improvement. And, you know, for, for me, the bottom line to this whole thing is, is being able to add two full-time cops, which we really need. And when you strike them other two positions, being able to add two full-time cops for roughly $50,000 a year is, that's a bargain to me, you know?
Yeah, because we're already funding partly of the evidence already, so.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
Yeah.
All right, Jeff.
Thank you all for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thanks, sir. All right, I guess that brings us to our end. Let's see here, I'm trying to think, we had, I know I had some stuff I had to mention. Mr. Brown, got anything you're thinking about?
No comments tonight, nothing tonight, sir.
Just want to wish everybody a Happy New Year. And since Toshi's not here tonight, I think I'll do a few of the RSBA announcements. We have a luncheon, a general membership luncheon that's coming up on January the 16th. Our guest speaker for that luncheon will be Daniel London. That's at noon at Calvin Community Center on January 16th. We have a ribbon cutting following that, not too far behind, January the 21st, which will be held at Abundant Life Family Worship Center. I know they've been open for a little while, but they are doing their ribbon cutting on Sunday morning at 9:30, January 21st. That's located at 1151 South Dixie Boulevard, here in Radcliffe. We're going to announce that one.
And then the Radcliffe Small Business Alliance is going to have its community alliance gala. It's a fundraiser, and that is at Philip Grove on January 27th at 5:30.
Tickets?
Tickets are $100, and we are selling those. You can reach out to any of the Radcliffe Small Business Alliance board members, or we're selling the tickets online as well.
How much do you know?
A hundred.
Per ticket?
Yes.
Okay.
You can also buy a table, we're also looking for businesses and organizations to donate for our auctions, because we need to raise some money for these nonprofit organizations. So if there's a business, or individual, or a community organization that would like to donate something to the auction, please get with us, and donate that to us.
Off the top of your head, you don't know the table prices, do you?
The table prices are thousand...
Thousand dollars.
Per table?
Yes.
Okay.
Ten, ten per, 10 people per table.
Got you. That's it?
Yes, sir.
And Daniel and I are going to lunch tomorrow, so I'm going to try to give him to say nice things about me, following Tuesday. All right, it's just you.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
You just got this one side, Miss Owens.
People do say nice things about you, sir. I was, I was with General Koloszewski Sunday, or yesterday, 5th Corps had its holiday reception, and, and he gave a nice overview about the NATO alliance and what we do from here in Kentucky, at Fort Knox, all the way over to Europe, which is where they spend most of their time. So between General Koloszewski and Major General Davis, who of course owns the Recruiting Command, and he's also the Garrison Commander, it's nice that they tie in the hometown relationships of the leaders and the local individuals that came, like Boba Prophet, and, and General Iacoca, and some other individuals. So our footprint here in Harden County, Mead County, or Central Kentucky, is so far forward, when you look at a unit that has that magnitude of European footprint, but they're doing it from here and going forward. And so it's nice that they hosted it again at the Pat Museum, so I get to be part of their lives over and over and over again. It's like being with your uncles and your aunts who don't want to go home, but it works really well. But again, he gave us a lot of connections between what their mission is, because it is huge considering what's going on now internationally, between, you know, Israel and Palestine, and of course, Ukraine, and they spend so much time working on those things. But their livelihood and what they do here, some people don't know, that they are kind of our greatest assets and our biggest neighbors that gives us shout-outs when they're in Poland. And now people know that there's a Radcliffe back here who live in Poland. But other than that, sir, thank you, I'm glad everybody made it back, and hopefully we will continue as a team to be productive.
Yeah, awesome, thank you. Just some quick things, so, let me see, hold on, I'll get my calendar out, I should have done it. We will be, there's several things that will be happening. So our next meeting, of course, is going to be Tuesday, the 16th, 15th, we are once again hosting, working with St. Stephen's Church, and those organizing the Dr. Martin Luther King Walk, that'll be here out in front of City Hall, I believe we start at 1:00 noon. I don't have all the information on the NAACP, anybody have that on the banquet? I don't have that, I usually have that, I'm sorry, I don't have it right now. But I know they'll be having something going on as well. So we will be closed that day, but we encourage everybody that wants to come out and support that. It's going to be cold that day, so wrap up, at least what the weather's saying. Then on February 3rd, we will have our, I'm trying to think how many years, but probably 15, 16th Annual Mayor's Breakfast, do I have it on there? What year is it? Getting old, Timmy. Is it 13, uh, 13? We'll figure it out. But our annual mayor's breakfast, it's going to be back at Calvin. We did, usually we do it the last Saturday, but obviously there's other stuff going on, so we want to just obviously work together, and I think it'll be beneficial for everybody to wake up fresh that morning, and not be rushing around all day. So it's going to be February 3rd. Same as always, be back at Calvin Community Center, we're encouraging, asking, Tim and his folks back there are going to be working to get information out, those that want to sponsor, donate, and help, you can please call Radcliffe City Hall, or you can call back to Calvin Community Center and ask for Alicia. And then next month, in the February work session, Chance and I will be going over kind of our state of the city. We usually do that every year, just kind of give you all an update of how much we are, where we're at. I know just in recently, Murray and I spoke this morning, and to one of our planning commissioners, Ms. Featherstone that's sitting back there, you know, we have had almost $50 million in construction building this year, which is, is huge, that tells you how busy they've been, and so, but we'll be updating you some numbers, kind of where we're at in the six-month period, and we'll give you some updates and future plans for the rest of the year, so. I think with that, we don't have anything else, I know, we got to get out of here, Mr. Park has to get out of here soon. So with that, I guess we will have a, our next meeting will be next week, the 16th, at 5:30 here at Radcliffe City Hall, so with that, we are adjourned. Thank you all.